November 5th will now come to order. Roll call.
Counselor Rousey.
Here.
Counselor Koyvenin.
Here.
Counselor Lillis.
Here.
Mayor Visolovich.
Here.
Approval of the minutes, City Council Special Meeting, September 25th. Minutes of City Council Workshop Meeting, September 30th. And Minutes of City Council Meeting, October 1st. If no one has any changes or corrections, call for a motion that we approve these minutes.
So moved.
Motion made by Koyvenin, do we have support?
Support.
Support by Rousey, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item D, Approval of Agenda. We have two items to add to new business. And item number seventeen will be a 2:00 AM liquor license. And number eighteen will be new ambulance. Financial package. If no one else has any changes, deletions, or additions, call for a motion that we approve tonight's agenda with these additions.
So moved.
Motion made by Koyvenin, do we have a support?
Actually, Lois, man.
Oh, I'll support it just to make it easier. Okay, motion made by Lois, support by Koyvenin. You know, you guys way down around that end, you sound the same.
Sort of look the same.
So. Any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item E, Appointment of Paul Mewich to the Planning Commission. It's been a long time since we had someone on that. Sure nice to see Paul step up for that one. If no one has any questions, a call for a motion that we appoint Paul Mewich to the Planning Commission?
So moved.
Motion made by Rousey, do we have a support?
Support.
Support by Koyvenin, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Since we have, uh, anyone from the audience like to address the City Council at this time? Otherwise, you only get about five minutes, otherwise we got it at the end. Okay, Bill?
Bill Aho, the Evlith Heritage Society. And I'm here with a grin on my face. The event we had on Saturday, I was amazed. And I want to thank you as a council for, for the auditorium, that venue. And also a big, big thank you to the public. I couldn't believe, you know, when you plan something, you don't know what you're gonna give. And we were almost at capacity in terms of the tables on the floor and also the tables on the side. So that was a big, big thank you. Our first fundraiser. And I'm very happy, but I don't have a tabulation yet of, uh, what our net was going to be. Probably is gonna be somewhere around twenty-five hundred. And I think that's pretty good for a first time.
Yeah, it was nice to see the interest there.
Yes, yes, I was amazed. And it turned out to be also kind of a social event. You know, from thirty-five years ago, you know, people are seeing each other for the first time, cat, pepper. And, uh, so all in all, it turned out to be a great, great event for the Wild Rose movie. And I just want the public to know, thank you, thank you from Aho. And I appreciate that, and the committee also appreciates that as well. So that's a short, uh, presentation, I bring you up to date. Any, any questions?
I'd like to give a shout out to those that donated, the popcorn makers and the popcorn.
Yes.
Which was, I believe, the library and the miners' bank. They were quite generous in that aspect.
Yes, yes.
So thank you to them too.
Yep, yep.
Because movies are all popcorn, why even go?
It was a movie theater set, and it worked very well for us. And thank you again. And thank you, public.
No, it was a good, appreciate the work you guys put in there, Bill. Consent Agenda, Approval of Payrolls, September 16th to the 30th. Approval of Payroll, October 1st through the 15th. Approval of Claims, October 2019. Recommendation for St. Louis County CBDG Citizen Advisory Committee to represent Evlith, which is Counselor Rousey had so graciously stepped up to fill that for us. Audit Proposal from Walker Drew Hahney for 2019 Annual Audit. Letter of Support for Iron Range Brownfield Coalition EPA Grant Application. And Broker Proposal. That's for the property on Hat Trick Avenue and adjacent land. That's the old days insight. Anybody have any questions on the consent agenda? If not, call for a motion that we approve the consent agenda. So moved. Motion made by Koyvenin, do we have a support?
Support.
Support by Rousey, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We have no public hearings, no unfinished business. We'll jump into new business. Pay Request Number Two from 3D Concrete Construction, an amount of eighteen thousand, eight hundred sixty-four dollars and seventy cents for 2019 curb and sidewalk improvements. No one has any questions, call for a motion that we pay 3D?
So moved.
Motion made by Rousey, do we have a support?
Support.
Is that you, Brian?
That would be me, sir.
Maybe it's time that, uh, friggin' hearing advertisement statement sending out.
I get them every week.
Support by Lillis, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item number two, Change Order Number One from Classic Protective Coatings, an amount of nineteen thousand, three twenty-nine and sixty-seven cents for 2018 water tower improvements. Anybody have any questions? Not call for a motion that we approve this change order?
Is this the end of it?
We're, we're still paying one more.
This is the last payment?
Should be the last payment, yep.
Associated with the water tower.
We got one more, the next item.
With the water.
That's the change order there.
Okay. That's it for me.
Do we have support to that? Do we have a motion?
No motion yet.
Oh. I'll make a motion just because I dislike the, I dislike the change orders because my opinion is when you bid a job, you bid a job, but a lot, so moved.
That's a decrease.
We made, there's no increase. This one's an increase, I think.
No.
Yeah, it is.
It, contract not a decrease by ninety.
I believe that there's an error where it says, I see where you're reading it's a decrease, but it's not a decrease, it's really an increase.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, the job is done, it's over with, but I just want everybody to, to realize that when you bid a job, that's what you bid. You know, it just, it's tough to take, so. Well, reading this, it looks like when they bid it, they bid the labor costs at the current rate and they had a contract redoal or change. And it, they built in the, uh, extra, but like you say.
That's according, according to the PLA that they have to sign, they have to get the unions, um, they have to talk with the unions and pay union, union wages.
That's why it went up. Then I took into consideration that nobody else bid. Yeah. So, I mean, we're stuck with what we have, but I just want everybody that bids to realize, you know, I myself am gonna go on a thing that what you bid is what you bid. You know, I mean, that's just, we all know what it can be, you can underbid something to get the project and then you can Yep. Put in change orders to cover up what you should have done, so. I, I don't have a problem if it's a thousand to five thousand, but you're talking twenty to forty thousand, then I got a problem.
So, excuse me, I think, Alan, help me if, if I'm incorrect, I believe, or remember, we bid the project and it took so long to get the PFA loan approved and we had to make utility rate changes, am I correct?
Correct.
But they only did part of the works, I'll turn it over to you now.
Yeah, so in that time period, Minnesota was prevailing wage rates for St. Louis County at least two times actually before the project actually started, so that's, uh, for PLA and the wage rate requirements from the PFA had to be the current ones at the time of the start. So there's two increases.
So that's more or less why it went up, it wasn't nothing to do with, you know, the product that they needed to work on, it was just.
Yep.
That's what was changing orders.
Well, and I just want the public to realize that too.
Yep.
The material costs and everything, seeing the scene. But I'll tell you what, that's quite a crew to do that job, especially doing the inside, hanging from those chairs, rope, oh. I hate to even just crawl up there with that wind that's there, people don't realize the wind up there. Yeah, when, when they're in those tanks, that's when we had that eighty, eighty-five degree weather there inside there, cleaning and painting.
I went up there much back in seventies.
You ain't getting, you ain't getting me up there.
Got caught too.
Uh, who made the motion here now? Anybody?
I did.
No, motion made by Koyvenin, do we have a support?
Sure.
Support by Rousey, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item number three, Pay Request Number Six and Final from Classic Protective Coatings, an amount of eighty-two thousand, five twenty-nine and sixty-seven cents for 2018 water tower improvements. I'll also move because that should close the books on them, that should be it.
Support.
Motion made by Koyvenin, support by Lillis, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item number four, here we go, Change Order Number One from Joel and Stop Escavating. But, this is not so bad because a couple more from here will get it back, so also move on this. That was for this Douglas Court Sanitary Sewer Project. Yes. You know what emergency that was, that time of the year. Yep. It came through. Do we have a support to that motion? Motion made by Koyvenin, support by Rousey, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item number three, for five, Pay Request Number Three Final from Joel and Stop Escavating, an amount of eight thousand, ninety-three dollars and eighty-five cents for the Douglas Court Sanitary Sewer Improvements.
So moved.
Are you ready to bite the bullet on that, somebody? Do we have any further discussion? Joe, you made the motion, you supported it, eh, John?
Sure.
Any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. This is a complicated one here, we got two together now. Number six, Change Order Number One, Joel and Stop Escavating, amount of six, negative six thousand, five hundred sixty-one dollars for 2018 Jackson Street Project. And number seven, Pay Request Number Three from Joel and Stop Escavating, amount of twenty-one thousand, seven forty-four, forty-seven seventy for the same project. Just because we got it back doesn't mean we can keep it, so also move. Didn't draw a lot of interest on that one, eh? Nope. That's all in pen mark. If no one has any questions, a call for a motion that we approve item six and seven?
What's the math on that, from what, uh, eleven? No. Fifteen grand? Roughly.
Fifteen, two?
Yeah.
Do we get a motion then? Yeah, I saw. Do we get a support?
Support.
Support by Lillis, any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Number eight, Through Scope of Work for Auditorium Stage Improvements. Total project cost, two oh eight, three hundred. Does this include the curtain, or is that something different again?
Oh, no, we already have the curtain. This is to hang the curtain, put the finish off the stage and do some AV work and, um, move some switches around that are kind of weird, so.
Somebody had mentioned, uh, should maybe take a look at the lighting where you go from up the stairs when you leave the main floor? I guess somebody had, uh, said stumbled.
On the stage?
When you're going up the stairway to get to the stage, when you open the door and shut it, it's a little dark, maybe.
We're taking care of that.
Say if somebody should look at the lighting there, it might need something there. Anybody have any questions on Auditorium Stage Improvements? If not, call for a motion that we approve this projected budget, two hundred eight thousand, three hundred dollars. So moved. Motion made by Koyvenin, do we have a support?
I'll support.
Support by Lillis, any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item number nine, Accept Bid from Hometown Electric, an amount of nine thousand, eight hundred thirty-five dollars for City Hall Lighting Replacement Project. Does that include the outside lighting too, or?
Just interior.
Just interior? You're the only bidder, Hometown Electric.
This was a budgeted item.
If no one has any questions, call for a motion that we accept the bid from Hometown Electric?
So moved.
Motion made by Rousey, we have a support?
Support.
Support by Koyvenin, any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item number ten, Accept Bid from Max Gray Construction, the amount of thirty-seven thousand, three hundred dollars for City Hall Reception Counter. That's a budgeted item also, wasn't that?
Yes, it's a carryover item.
Yes.
So if you could approve the basement and the alternate, the alternate's gonna end up being less because we're gonna go with a different product that's not so expensive and it's easier to take care of. But I just talked to the contractor and so we'll end up doing a change order deduct. From, at, at, alternate one, so.
I see, uh, see, another one only had one bidder on that too.
There's a shortage of small contractors that like to do work like this. People have gotten older, retired, nobody to replace them, um, and Max Gray's working up at daycare, so it's a good location for them to come over here and work on this. Yeah, I, I did, gave a whole bunch of names of people and.
Max Gray does good work too, they've been doing it for years.
They did our last phase of the auditorium.
Yep. They're good with these old buildings, because they worked on so many around here. They're one of the last, one of the few left that work on the old buildings.
Correct.
They've always got some good feedback too, you know, around a project.
Yep.
I really like them. If no one has any questions, a call for a motion that we accept the bid from Max Gray Construction? So moved. Motion made by Koyvenin, do we have a support?
Support with, uh, just a little discussion.
Support by Rousey, any further discussion?
Yes, just a little. Is this a new robust, is this gonna really fit our purposes? I know the back of the car isn't gonna be laid out the way that we really want it, and you looked into all of that. You know what I mean, the counter's there, it's just a counter.
Yep, the counter's there.
But behind the counter, that usable space, it's gonna be.
It's gonna, we're gonna keep the usable space behind the counter because it works for us. Nobody's told me throughout this planning that it hasn't worked for us, so that's gonna stay. We're talking about a top, we're talking about transaction windows, we're talking about a door, a secure door. Yeah, it's, it's.
See, that's what I'm talking about, new and improved.
Yeah, new and improved, yes, yep, and I dusted this off, this was hanging around for a while.
Yes, I know we talked about.
I dusted it off, yep.
Okay, that's all I got on that.
Well, you know, you're getting a lot of characters nowadays and I was here one time sitting in the office with Mike Whistler, we had somebody out of control, we had to get some help from the back to kind of calm him down. So it may be a scary thing when you're the only one back there.
Yeah, definitely.
Somebody's friggin' group balls.
Definitely a safety issue.
Yeah, that's, uh, a long time in common. Any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item number eleven, Pay Request Number Two from Bugalis Incorporated, sixty-two thousand, thirty-five dollars for Fail Pond Lift Station Reconstruction. I'll, uh, also move with the discussion also.
And I'll second it because I want to hear it.
Motion made by Koyvenin, support by Rousey, any further discussion? Yes, I just want, uh, this is covered underneath our insurances, or will we get this back for the lift station?
So I've already been reimbursed for a large amount of our out-of-pocket expenses. We will have a deductible, and then also, Jerry, I believe that the upgrade for the change in the generator is ours?
Yeah, but I thought, uh, I'm not sure if that's a decrease or not.
Oh, okay.
We went with a natural gas.
And we, we had our, um, our local agent could really push the lead because they kind of wanted to just, I'm gonna say, cob this together. And we weren't a fan of cobbing it together.
Yeah.
We were a fan of having it designed like we do every project to be responsible with the taxpayers' money to make sure that we get a good quality building that functions for our purposes. So, um, we might have to argue a little bit about those fees, but our agent has helped us a whole lot to convince them that.
And that was what I was trying to get across to everybody, that this was because we had a little accident down there and
Yep.
And now it's all fixed and taken care of and it didn't cost us that much money, so.
And we've got preventative measures.
And now we have preventative measures.
Right, the guardrail.
Unless an airplane hits it.
Well, I can't, you know.
Yep.
Never know.
Yeah, I think you thank St. Louis County, uh, Yes. Chief had mentioned it to them and they looked at it and agreed that guardrails should go there. There's so many people walking down there. Yeah. And stopping, it, it could have been something a lot worse than it was. Well, when you look at that building there, you, you'd think back, well, how can that be in anybody's way? Well, we've had a few accidents down there that, you know, it was.
I can remember.
Yeah.
When it was a fatality.
One was a fatality too, so. It can happen anywhere.
That's right.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item number twelve, Correspondence from Rams Regarding Nominations for Board of Directors. If no one has any objections, I would like to nominate Counselor Hadrava. I'd like to second that.
I would like to have made the motion.
I'm recommending it, so you making a motion, Joe? I will.
I'll second it then.
Motion made by Koyvenin, support by Rousey, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Crabs on the corpse.
Item thirteen, Recommendation from Public Safety Committee Regarding Firefighter Pay and Annual Retirement Benefits. If no one has any questions, I'll make a motion.
I'll make the motion as long as I can ask a question.
Yes.
This is, motion was made.
I'll support.
Motion made by Rousey, support by Lillis.
I just, uh, wanted to be known that I believe that this raise is to bring everybody into like where everybody else is. We're not leading the league in paying our people, we're just trying to catch up to where everybody else is, is that correct?
Well, I think, yeah, we still probably are trailing some of them, you know, some of our,
You know.
Some of the communities that are in our area, even with the increases, we're gonna be a little bit less than they are, but, um, you know, it's a twofold thing, one is the, the, um, uh, pay increase for, uh, the hourly as well as the training and then there's a, uh, second part of it, and that would be the, uh, a request by the Relief Association for Retirement Raise. So, um, you know, we, we met and discussed this and looked at, you know, the facts and figures and, and, uh, we felt that this recommendation that we're making is fair because of the fact that we're, uh, raising the, um, hourly pay to the requested amount. We're not raising the training pay to the requested amount because we are giving a increase for the retirement, so. Um, we felt like that was the fair thing to do, so. And, you know, this is a step, I think, in the right direction. We, we've been at the same pay rate for many, many years, I think everyone that was at the meeting couldn't even recall the last time that we.
So I just wanted to bring out to the public that this is not unusual, this is just to bring them up to snuff, they're so far behind that this should.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Before, actually.
This could have been done three, four years ago, you know, but.
That's what I'm trying to bring out, I'm behind it a hundred percent, of course.
Yeah.
I just want the public to know, they're giving them a raise, no, they're just bringing them up to where everybody else is, they're not even according to.
Yeah, we're still, we're still a couple bucks and, and more below what comparable communities in the area are, are paying, but, um, you know, with, it's kind of a balance between the, the raises and the Relief Association.
Well, that's where all these are in my book, so.
Well, it's going the right direction, you know, you, you don't want to get too far behind, you want to attract new members because, you know, their, their time and their training, that takes away from other things for them and they should be getting some adequate compensation.
Yep, attracting new members, retaining existing members, retention and, um, that's pretty important stuff. And we're hoping going forward that we can visit this issue a little bit more frequently, you know, rather than waiting to, you know, years and years to pass for, uh, requests to come in, but, um, I think we're, we're going in the right direction though if we approve this particular issue.
One of, you know, and I can't speak for Counselor Lillis, but I go to my goals is to, would the people come and train here and work here, I want them to stay here. And if we're not comparable in the price, you know, in the hourly wage, they're gonna use Evlith for stepping stone because we have a great training facility, a lot of good teachers around here, and I want to try to keep them here. And as I think, so does Counselor Lillis too, so that's why we're trying to get the pay up to where everybody's at so when they go through their training, they'll say, you know what, let's make Evlith their home. We're not gonna get, you know, better deal anywhere else. So that's where I'm, I'm coming from. That's a good strategy, you know, you, you have to pay these people because the job changes, it gets more complex, training's changed. You know, a lot of people say, well, it's only a couple bucks, well, when you have two kids at home and you got taxes, you got this and that, that couple bucks an hour is a lot of money. You know, that can detour somebody to go to another town. So hopefully we can get where we're supposed to be and keep everybody in town. That sounds good to me, any other discussion? Do we have a motion?
Motion, second, yeah.
No further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item fourteen, Resolution Accepting Donation From Friends of the Park for the Christmas decorations, an amount of five hundred dollars. Call for a motion that we accept this donation from Friends of the Evlith Parks and send them a letter of thank you for that donation, for our decorations?
So moved.
Do we have a support?
I'll support.
Motion made by Lillis, support by Koyvenin, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item number fifteen, Request From Safety Committee To Purchase New AEDs. I just got one question, maybe for the audience, what is an AED, so they know? I really don't. Okay, that's, with all the terminology nowadays, people might not know what, what they are.
We're replacing five and adding one at the auditorium. And this is coming from our safety fund, it's a fund you folks established probably ten years ago. So every year we have a budgeted amount that I put in that fund, so there's plenty of funds to cover this expense.
If no one has any questions, call for a motion that we approve the purchase of the new AEDs?
I will make that motion, but I do have a question. See if I lost it twice.
Motion made by Rousey. We have a support? I'll support. Support by Koyvenin?
Do we get traded on the old ones?
Uh, I believe so, yes, yes, yep.
That's my question.
I didn't know they took them in on three, good question.
Well, you never, you never get much, as you know, you don't get much.
Whatever you got.
They're never used and they still don't care.
I know.
Good question, I didn't know that.
Yep.
Item number sixteen, Resolution Authorizing Grant Of Access Easement Agreement And Authorizing Grant Of Land License Agreement To CE Power Engineering Services Formerly Known As Utility Plus Energy Services Incorporated.
Uh, Mayor, excuse me, but Stephanie's telling me that you guys have to vote on that last one.
Oh. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. You know, that industrial park's got more easements and land licenses.
They're sticky wicket.
Well, you know, when it first started out there with Malton Building? Everybody just drove off of Malton's driveway until they got the frontage road. They didn't know whose land they were driving over, but that's where they drove.
Different times back then.
Yeah.
So CE Power's landlocked? And they don't have an access to the frontage road, so they really need this if they were to ever try to sell and so their access easement to their building overlaps part of the permanent access easement for daycare. Okay? And then the land license is because they periodically, once or twice a week, have a semi come in to unload, so they're gonna have to come in, turn to the right and back up, and that's what the land license is for, and that also crosses over a bit of the daycare easement and into the parking lot that we still retain ownership of, so everything will work just fine.
Anybody have any questions? If not, call for a motion that we approve this resolution?
So moved.
Motion made by Rousey, we have a support?
Support.
Support by Lillis, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item seventeen, Approval Of 2:00 AM Liquor License For Red Garter. No one has any questions? How come these are all at different times?
Uh, Stephanie can answer that one.
Oh, Steph?
They all do have states and it's based on their, when they have renewed it each year.
Oh, I just thought it was like end of year, you had, just everybody did it at the same time and.
Sort of like getting your dope permit.
Yeah, we got the same thing. If no one has any questions, call for a motion that we approve this liquor license for red garter?
So moved.
Motion made by Koyvenin, we have a support? Support by Rousey, any further discussion? Support by Rousey, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item eighteen, approved financing for a new ambulance? Jackie, you want to?
Sure, you folks had approved the purchase of the ambulance quite some time ago and, um, that includes the ambulance, the Stryker Power load cot and the Motorola radio. And together, all these items cost two hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars, tw- two hundred and fifty-nine thousand twenty-three dollars and forty-five cents. You've already received a donation from the town of Fay, thanks again Fay, um, twenty thousand dollars and we're taking some money out of some vehicle replacement funds and taking some money out of reserves to pay for all of this equipment and we are not taking out a loan. And we expect delivery like later this month, the ambulance is, um, being inspected right now by Operations Supervisor Elrum and Chuck Larson EMT and then it's going to a show in Wisconsin and then it's coming to us.
Okay. We're keeping the other ones too, aren't we?
We have two other ones.
The other one's in, didn't we?
I don't believe so.
Just curiosity.
Yep.
And this one is a four-wheel drive?
Yes.
Okay, that's.
I think we have one, one of our other ones is, isn't that bad, I think we talked about maybe making sure we could take runs and stuff with it.
Yeah, Teresa and I are talking about.
Transfers and transfers, because transfers, you know, I hate to say it, there's a lot of transfers nowadays because of the elderly people and, and just, just because.
Yep.
And if we can have a reliable transfer vehicle, we can retain a lot of money back for these runs and we have the, we have the people that can make the runs, we made their pay increases, so they're not going anywhere, so if we can get a reliable vehicle and we can start taking more.
I, I, I only know that the fire hall situation is tight now. Where is the third ambulance going to go? Do you know what I mean? What I'm saying, I can't fit another stick in it.
Well, I would probably think that we'll take the, one of the better ones and then take the other one and I don't know where Draw's going to find a spot for that. But it'll be somewhere cozy.
And, and well secured and heated, I hope.
Yes.
These things need to be, you know.
And I apologize, I don't have the final, the, have the full file with me. I don't believe, I wasn't on the committee, so I apologize for that too. Um, I don't know, I don't believe it's being traded in, but I'll talk to Teresa when she gets back from.
I haven't heard anything.
I, I was wondering, I didn't know if somebody said we were or not.
Yeah, I'll speak with her, I'm sure she's got a plan already sorted out, so.
All I know is that you can't fit another stick in the fire hall, it's tight.
No, not that place. Anybody else, any further discussion? Call for a motion that we approve the purchase financing of this new ambulance? So moved. Support. Motion made by Lilis, support by Coivin, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. That takes care of new business, does anybody have any committee, committee reports or commission reports from any meetings if they want to share with us?
We did a library thing, we have four meetings a year. They seem to be really right on track, they had a nice book sale that went well. Everything else is moving along as fast as things move along, there's some new music that they're talking about and stuff like that, but overall, uh, I think that things are moving in the right direction, they have some good programs coming up and they're staying on top of things and they always seem to be really on top of what's going on, so[1667.21]